It is 7:32 PM. Again, good evening, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for attending our Tuesday, March 20th, May 23rd, May 23rd, 2023 Open Public Board Meeting. On behalf of our Board Secretary, our Superintendent, and her Cabinet Administration, and all of our district staff, we welcome you this evening. Roll off, please, boys and girls.
Mr. Carlson?
Here.
Ms. Dowling?
Here.
Ms. Bielek?
Here.
Ms. Franco-Herman?
Present.
Ms. Harris? Ms. Spina?
Present.
Mr. Todd?
Here.
Ms. Leleka-Jernigan?
Here.
Dr. Spencer Swall?
Present.
That completes the roll.
With everyone, please rise for the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, please be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Brian Walls, our MHS senior student representative, is absent this evening. So next, we will hear from our Superintendent McLaughlin and with her superintendent for hand presentations.
Good evening, everyone. I want to begin with some exciting news from the schools. Montgomery High School student Sarish Prabhanak earned a rare gold medal standing on the USA Physics Olympiad. This places Sarish in the top 40 students in the country. This marks two students in the top 50 for MHS, Sarish for physics and Arjun Charha for chemistry. Congratulations. Latin four honor students have just published a book that was collaboratively produced by the class as a real-world project-based task. This book is a student edition of Thomas Aquinas. The class discovered through their studies that no student edition existed and set out to addressing this need for a real audience. It was a needs-based, student-driven, authentic project that promises to have significant impact on modern studying at the secondary and college levels. This is an excellent intercultural example of interrelationships between Islamic, Jewish, and Christian scholarship. Congratulations to our Latin four. May is Mental Health Month. All month long, the MHS faculty have found ways to integrate a mental health focus in each of our curricular areas. From testing strategies to conquering anxiety in math and mindful minutes in science, to video messaging, breaking the stigma around athletes and mental health from our coaches, every member of the MHS is taking a stand to support our students and break the stigma around mental health. At MHS, we recognize that mental health is health. The fifth and sixth grade chorus concert was held at the Impact last night. There were 300-plus in attendance for this incredible performance conducted by Mr. Staslin Keefe. Over 175 students participated in this 90-minute program with great music and beautiful voices. The evening ended with Mr. Richards, who will be retiring at the end of next month, being invited to be the guest conductor for the sixth-grade song, "The End of the World." The chorus made sure Mr. Richards looked good as the conductor. Breaking news out of the press. Congratulations to the UMS Girls Lacrosse Team who won the league championship against Hillsboro this afternoon, 7:00 to 6:00. I want to give everyone an overview of the year for our safety and security. As you know, there's nothing more important than keeping our students, staff, and visitors in our district buildings safe. On an ongoing basis, we identify opportunities to improve our internal procedures while assessing the district's safety and security protocols to ensure our best practices are implemented. An ongoing threat assessment, both internal and external, require appropriate management in order to develop effective mitigation strategies. As threat levels and school violence continue to increase, safety and security enhancements are essential in maintaining the district-wide safe and secure learning environments. Several enhancements were proposed and implemented during this school year by our Director of Safety and Security, Todd Wayne. Who's here tonight, by the way. NJ State Grants Award, $26,000 of funds used to offset the cost of free M-fil, the bet's going to be used for strategic areas in district buildings. SAFE, which is Safety Initiative Program Award, a $10,000 based on the quarterly reports submission and criteria met, we anticipate receiving this award this school year. We recruited and hired a full-time security officer for MHS beginning June 2023. Three additional security staff members will be hired for the 23-24 school year. We've conducted in-camera audit to ensure that they are fully operational and maintain a master list of cameras and cables. Proposed upgrade for camera bandwidth capacity at MHS for enhanced functionality and connectivity across multiple phases. Completed audit of the district Share 911 users added a visitor registration option for 24-hour access only. Incorporated the district CRG maps to Share 911 platform for district users. Attended the Deep Constructing Evolving Conference to analyze and review real-world scenarios to strengthen and improve procedures within our district. Conduct regular drill observations at each building, engage in tabletop discussions, and provide ongoing recommendations. Coordinate and plan security projects with vendors to develop new ID badge and entry system for the district and staff and this MHS students beginning in the fall of 2023. We also, Mr. Wayne, also conducted an assessment of the current school building, main entryways, provided proposals for developing new secure vest reviews for each building that will incorporate car readers, inter-car systems, cameras, and dual-locking mechanisms. Attended quarterly safety meetings on all school alliance insurance fund representatives, received training to lead the district's behavioral threat assessment team, facilitated the district's quarterly safety team meetings, regularly attend building-wide staff meetings to address safety and security questions and concerns, conduct home visits for chronically absent students, assist building administration with filing of truancy complaints in court, collaborated with the high school administrators to access current arrival dismissal procedures and make recommendations to pilot a potential new arrival process. Complete all state reporting requirements in the areas of safety and security. Reviewed the district's memorandum of agreement with the Montgomery Township Police Department. Attend county's school safety specialist monthly meetings. Regular and ongoing communication with local law enforcement, including participating in emergency response drills at our schools on May 13th and 20th. Work closely with transportation department regarding safety procedures and road projects in town that will impact our routes. That's a lot, and that's just a preview of some of the things that Mr. Wayne has been working on this past year in our safety and security area. The district will be closed Monday, May 26th, in observance of Memorial Day. Due to not using emergency contingency days, the district will also be closed on Friday, May 26th, and Tuesday, May 30th. I hope you all enjoy the long weekend and are able to attend the Memorial Day ceremony on Monday at 9:00 AM at the Veterans Memorial Park. Shifting gears now, I'm sure everyone's wondering what's sitting here in front of me. I would like to call up Montgomery High School Principal, Ms. Heather Pino Pidi, to introduce a special presentation from the Science Olympiad.
Good evening, everyone. So tonight, we have an extra-special presentation for all of you. Typically, during the month of May, we bring something with us to show what our students are accomplishing and highlighting some of the greatest achievements that we have in Montgomery High School. This year, I had the privilege to do something that I have not yet had the opportunity to do in my 14 years. I got to go and see our Science Olympiad students compete. So our students, they compete all over the place, from MIT to Yale, Columbia, Princeton, and not all the events are open to the public. So this year, when we did have some open events close to home at Princeton, I seized the opportunity along with Mrs. Rivera. I actually brought my own son, who's now absolutely enthralled, and I'll share with you his comment that I think all of you will enjoy as well, and got to see a couple of events. So what we have for you tonight is some of our absolute brightest minds sharing with you some of the events that they competed regularly. I'm going to bring Mr. Sullivan up in a minute, and he's going to share with you all of their accomplishments. But I do want you to know that what these individuals and our staff, so I believe we have most of the staff behind me, Mr. Belusu, Mrs. Heedner, Mr. English, Mr. Sullivan. Where is? And Mr. Resch. So they work tirelessly, and it is a very, very common thing that you walk through the building and you find our students along with their advisors fine-tuning their experiments, working on calculations, and getting things just so precise so that way, when they do get to competition, they really do bring the heat to their competitors. So last year, we made it to the national level of competition. We were robbed of an ability to travel because of some of the post-pandemic restrictions that were present. But what we did get to do is compete in a variety of events where we placed, I think, from first to eighth across the nation. This year, we literally missed the opportunity to go to Nationals by a hair. We came in second in the state, I think, by a point or two, and that one or two points is what keeps you either in or out of Nationals. I really think we would have made a run for first in many areas again this year. So you heard that we had two students that are part of our Science Olympiad that did indeed place in the top 40 and 50 in the nation in both chemistry and physics. They're here behind me. And what we have for you are a few of my favorite events. This one over here is among my two favorites, and this is the one that my son is most amazed with. So this bridge, it's called the Bridge Event, weighs almost nothing. They'll give you precise measurements. In my human mind, it's called "almost nothing." And you're going to see what they're going to do with it, and they're going to put a whole bunch of weight on it. And while my 10-year-old watched this in a lecture hall at Princeton University, he was absolutely amazed. And in the end, I said, "What do you think? Do you want to do this one day?" And he goes, "So much work." Only for them to break it on purpose. But ours did not break, everyone. So with that, I'm going to bring up Jason Sullivan, and he's going to share with you some of the accomplishments before we share with you some of the actual experiments by the kids.
First, I'd like to give a big shout-out to Ms. Heather Pino for inviting us and giving us this opportunity. A little bit of a rare, we actually were here last year to celebrate going to Nationals. The only problem was it coincided with an orchestra concert. So we couldn't do all of this stuff, and most of our students were not able to be here. So I thought, "Let's, we had a great year. So let's do this again and give them proper send-off." And, you know, I wanted to mention, Ms. Rivera and Ms. Pino had took time out of their Saturday and come down. It meant the world. This was the first time in my 21 years at Montgomery that an administrator had come to an event. So that was, like, huge. And, you know, we all know that she makes everybody Instagram famous. So that's wonderful. And, you know, so it's really a special, this is my 28th year coaching Science Olympiad. I know you take stock in that. How did he start when he was 11? We'll figure that out later. But it is my 28th year doing this. And so much fun, enjoy to be around the kids and see what they can do and accomplish. And just to give you kind of a little bit of a taste of what was accomplished this year, you can see the hardware behind me. So we started our season out way back in the summer. The kids actually sent me to coach school all summer. So they nominated me, and I got a chance to go to the Science Olympiad Coach School in the middle of the summer. And that was a lot of fun. We learned so much. We started there, and then our first event was in November. We went up to Cornell University. Nice cold day in Cornell. And we came our way. We kind of went with somewhat of an expectation, and we walked away with first place. And that was a really good start for us. And all of these events, all of these events consist of about 15 to 18 students on a team. We typically will take two teams to all of our events. So what you see behind me in the student population is only a fraction of who is actually part of this team, a good fraction of it. I'm glad so many of them were able to make it tonight. Then we continued on with the January of sort of Saturday death, if you will. So we started with regionals. We went down, regionals is not that competitive. We went down, we totally dominated and took first place. And we expected that. Anything less would have been bad. I'm going to ask that you hold your applause because we'd be here all night. So then headed up to MIT and give you a little sense of even in the room what Science Olympiad legacy is. All of the science teachers in this room, Mr. Pendleton included, have been Science Olympiad coaches at some point in their career. And there, many of them are here tonight because these kids don't mean that to them. So we would head up to Boston in early January, place eighth there. That is our most challenging tournament. The national champions are there. We had never finished above, I think, 17th place at that tournament. We finished eighth, so we were in a really good place. Continued the very next week to Columbia, took first. We had, I think, a week off, if I remember right, maybe not. It was a blur. Then we were at Princeton, took first. We finished our invitational season down at UPenn. We took third. The first-place team was a team from Chicago, Adelaide Stevenson High School outside of Chicago. And just this week, they won the national championship. Sorry. Pardon me? Yes, it's a very good high school. And they won the national tournament just this last weekend. So congratulations to them. They beat us by about 30 points on that one. So we were in their league, as we say. Second-place team was Westwoodshire North, and they were the ones that beat us at State. So both of them were able to compete at Nationals. State tournament, as Ms. Pino said, went really, really well for our team. So there are 23 events that we compete at. It is like golf, so you want low score. And we scored 64 points. So if you do the math, there, we're averaging under third place in all 23 events. Fairly impressive when the state of New Jersey is as competitive as it is. Unfortunately, North finished just a little bit ahead of us. There was a time back and forth where we actually were ahead and went back and forth. But the way that process happened and the way the students handled that whole back and forth and the closeness, literally lost by one point. When it first came out, the way that they handled that was astounding. The maturity and the thoughtfulness that they did, the captains here are just incredible. So so happy to be a part of what they do. Sometimes they throw your way, sometimes they do not. And at States, North took first in an event we beat them at the week before or two weeks before by 15 places. So that was the difference. And so, yes, it could have been us talking about a trip to Wichita right now, but it was not. But we still had a really, really good, fun season. All right, now a little bit for the team as we go through there. Couple advisors that are here tonight. Mr. English is chemistry teacher at the high school. Mr. Belusu is hiding back in the corner, I think, someplace. And then ancillary to that, Mr. Resch, who just can't help himself and actually volunteered to go down on a Saturday and attend to UPenn with us. And also not in attendance tonight, that I saw, Ms. Stacy Westusen. And Stacy volunteered to go up to Boston for a weekend. So these are people that are colleagues of mine in the science department, teachers of your children, that love them so much that they take up a whole weekend and do this. So they're just amazing people. Ms. Heedner always lending a hand in the chemistry, and Mr. Pendleton monitoring mostly the woodworking that goes on all the time. So big shout-out to all of them, and thank you for their help. It would not happen without them. All right, we're going to get to the fun part here real soon. I'm going to call up some captains as we go through this. So the captains are truly the heart and soul of our team. There are seven of them. And there are two juniors, both of which competed in the American Chemical Society of Chemistry Olympiad, both finishing with high honors. So I'd like to recognize Ishan Mongakar and Arjun Sharma. They have the tough task, they're juniors, so they're coming back. So as we go through there. Then to the beloved seniors as we recognize them tonight. This is their last competition. This may get a little bit difficult for me. This group started their ninth-grade year in 2020. And I think we know kind of how that went. So that spring, Science Olympiad got canceled with everything else in the world, and so they lost out on that. But it wasn't before we established some things. We went to Cornell University, and I think that was a pretty good bonding point. And I learned later this year that all of the senior captains, well, I don't know all, but for a good portion of them, really were not close friends coming into high school. I had no idea because they seem inseparable most of the time now. So learning what that did and brought them together was kind of surprising to me, but important. And so they bonded that ninth-grade year. Tenth grade was, again, kind of awash a little bit. We had some virtual competitions, but nothing that was in person, and it's very different in that way. And then junior year, we were all virtual, and they put it together. They just came together, and we had a tremendous year. We won all kinds of tournaments, won the state championship, got to compete at Nationals. Highlights of what they did. This year, no less. They put together a great team. They were great leaders every day, and so grateful for them. So let me recognize the five of them right now. First, Annie Miao. Then Sid Pava. You can come to graduation and find out where all of them are going and pursuing after this. Miranda Ching. I do not think Anthony's here yet, right? No, Anthony Zai is not here. Had another commitment. May show up a little bit later. And Caroline Chow. They do everything. They put together tryouts, they run the show. And they are totally incredible and will be greatly missed. All right, legacy-wise, you're going to see what they have here in terms of events from last year. They have not big shoes to fill next year. We don't fill shoes, we just build on our legacy, and they have left a great one. But you're going to get to see some events. So as Ms. Pino had said, the bridge is right up here front and center. We also have the scrambler car, which is here. It has a, we didn't put the egg on it today just for, you know, safety reasons, but usually has an egg on the front of it. I don't think they did. The eggs are still in the refrigerator, by the way. And then back in the back corner, this is a state championship trajectory. And that particular device that you're going to get to see, they're going to shoot into a bucket, but that's just a part of the competition. So when they go to these events, they don't know parameters. So the scrambler car, they don't know how far they have to travel. You have to go as fast as you can and stop it as close to a wall that you don't know where it's at until the day of the competition. So doing all the data collection is time-consuming. Same thing with trajectory. They have a target in the middle, right on the line, that's short, and also up to between 1 and 2 meters high on a table. So they're going to do that. And they have another one that is somewhere around 8 to 9 meters out, offset from the center. So you've got to angle it. And then if we do well on those first two shots, they get a shot at what we're going to call the bucket shot. And that bucket shot is again offset. None of those distances are known until you arrive that day. So you have to practice everything. You have to do the math and the work. This doesn't come down to 15 people. You'll see a lot of people in this room tonight that were not on our full-competitive scoring team at States, but all of them had contributions. And it wouldn't have been a team without them. So I don't think we're going to do the other one. The other one is a plane over in the box by Mr. Dolan. But we'll keep that one in the box because it'll get a little bit of time, and we'll probably end up having to take it off the lights. So we'll let that go. So if, students, if you want to ready your positions into your devices, and I will kind of wrap up and let this go. So I think what you're going to see is evidence here of a couple things. And my administrative colleagues will know this, that one of my pet peeves when we talk in meetings is this idea of learning loss. I have a high schooler myself, and they did not have a normal high school experience, whatever we want to call "normal." But I'm telling you, they learn things, and they can do things that students that I've never had before can do. So yes, we may not have the same metrics anymore, but they are amazing, and they did a lot of amazing things in this. And, you know, students, as you go through and you pursue that next level, don't ever let anybody tell you you missed out on something. You are so accomplished, and you know more than I ever did when I was 17, 18. So let's the show begin. And everybody in the audience, this is something we call spectator events. So it's not something you sit down and watch. So get yourself up, go over to one of the events, and check it out. We'll show off some stuff. Thank you. They will show off some stuff. Thank you.
Sometimes it breaks.
Sometimes it breaks. This bridge does not break. So if it does break, I would like to ask everyone to like. Well, I know it won't break.
Yes, yeah, that's an engineer, right?
Now you know all the bridges. Anybody else want to go? This is the bridge of last year. It says the bridge. It holds 15 kilometers.
Very cool.
Yeah, I mean, there's some questions I have. Oh, yeah, I do. I mean, I've looked at it.
Thank you, everyone. We're going to reconvene at our open public meeting at this time. Thank you for enjoying our exceptional students.
Very cool.
And let's hear the thunderous round of applause for those coaches and staff members who worked tirelessly and diligently helping students to get this role. That'll be neat when the Nuggets take the series four games to two next month. So we've reached a portion of our agenda. Specific to our action agenda items, public comment. Will now the robotics team will take this picture. Issue a point of order. Thank you again, everyone.
Very exciting.
Thank you, Gold Pino meeting. We understand and thank you for your cooperation. So the Board of Education welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to address the board regarding the action agenda items only for our first public comment. For a maximum of three minutes per speaker, all comments must be directed to the Board of Education. Before you make your comment, however, please state your name and address and write it in the notebook provided on the podium. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, board employees, and board members, and to avoid any liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment portions of the meeting are not structured as Q and A, but rather are offered as opportunities for the public to share their thoughts with the board. The board may need to refer the issue to the superintendent if the issue has not been addressed through the appropriate chain of command, typically starting at the school level. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. So Vice President Ahmed, we're going to open with the action agenda items only. Our first of two public comment tonight. Which action agenda item will you be speaking to?
About the vote for the Eve, for the Eve holiday off?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Do you want me to put my name in first or do it after?
Sure, yes, thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Samira Gani and I'm the mom of three girls who are going to the Montgomery Public School. One actually graduated. I'm going to thank the board, especially President Zeldis, that's Wallace for hearing the request of the Muslim community at the last hearing for a day off for the Eve holiday. Montgomery is a beautiful, inclusive community and giving the Eve holiday off would be a great step in the direction of inclusion and celebrating our diverse backgrounds. So just for that, I really want to thank you from the bottom of my heart on behalf of the entire Muslim community.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gani and I'm Montgomery. First, I would like to address 1.2, the policy second reading. For the, all of the policies, can you tell us what is being changed? I haven't heard you like mention anything. And I've been here a couple times asking about the redlining and it's been ignored. I sent an email and I didn't get any response. So it would be nice to know what is being changed, even if it's just a quick comment so the public knows. Second item, 2.7, textbook approval. Summer Bird Blue is to be replaced with another title. So I would like to know what is it replacing? What is the title of the book that is being removed? What is the value of this book, this new book? And what goals does it align with and who proposed it? I read this book today, actually, and half of the story is focusing on questioning of the main character's sexuality in gender and it's got 15 F words. So I just want to see what the value of this book is. And 2.9, there is a long list of consultants, mostly doctors with large sums per hour. So I would like to know, why do we need all these doctors? Are they running click or a school? And what budget is this service from? And since there's a lot of evaluations, are the permissions from the parents before the students evaluate it? And are the results shared with the parents? Thank you.
And I can pick it up and be at the right height. Francine Pfeffer, 5 Mystic Drive and Skillman. I'm looking at the calendar and since I was here two meetings ago, agreeing with the Muslim community that you should add Eve to the calendar. I would like to thank you for doing that. And I would also like to thank you for recognizing that Christian hegemony is a real thing by not taking away other people's holidays. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Shirin Ahmed and I have two kids in the school district, one in high school and one in middle school. And I just want to echo what Samira and the lady before me said. I just want to thank you for your consideration for Eve being considered as a district holiday. I firmly believe that diversity is a fact, but inclusion is a choice. And if we get this approved, this is a choice that we all are making for our kids to show at school in their authentic selves and be able to share their holiday and the traditions around it. So I just want to, once again, thank you for the consideration and enabling this for our children.
Will the other community member issue a public comment specific to the action agenda? Support Secretary Ahmed, action agenda public comment is now closed. Thank you for your questions and your comments. I do agree with the statement that inclusion is a choice and Montgomery continues to be committed to exercising and showing what that choice looks like in honor and respect of everyone that lives in this community. So Superintendent McLaughlin, would you please respond to any questions?
The first question about 1.2, what is being changed in the policy? I don't have that available right in front of me. Ms. Dowling, I don't know if you have anything in the notes. I know that you were in your notes previously sharing out what was changed. So it would be.
I would have to go back to the notes. I think that as a committee, we need to decide if we're redlining anything. So I've never done that in the past. So I need to talk to the entire committee and make sure that we're all on board with that.
Sure.
So Michelle, I don't know if you want to go through, but this is the summary from Strauss in regards to the changes. If you want to read them, at a high level, just what's changing based on the policy or law, it's up to you. I'm happy to read it.
Go ahead. Is that reflected in our notes from the meetings?
Yes.
Thank you.
So for health service personnel, there was a revision. Strauss estimated revised policy guide 5305 to include language from NJAC and addressing the requirements for the school physician's license status and required employment contract and to incorporate all of those provisions. So it's essentially updating the state law. Similar to student health records, both 5308 and R5308 programs to support student development. Student records have been readopted, so the policy's been readopted from the previous one. And the last one is 5310, which is health services. And those programs are to support student development and have been, once again, readopted with New Jersey State Department of Education. With some revisions, these administrative codes revisions are minimum and include updates to terminology and reordering of provisions in the administrative code. So just basic changes to the mandatory policy based on the New Jersey state law.
Thank you. The next question about the textbook approval, 2.7. It's not a replacement book, it's for the replacement course. It's the 10th grade English replacement course. And then the book is also going to be added to the CP 10th grade English as either a summer reading or an optional book for students. And 2.9, behavior therapy associates, that's all the people that are employed there. We have to approve all consultants that we use in the next school year. They're already on our approval list. These doctors do not work for us in the event that a child needs an evaluation with the parent's approval or because of the safety and security of the school, it's necessary for the child to have an assessment in order to return to school. That's when they would go to that company. If the parent chooses to choose that one, they could choose one on their own as well. And it's just to ensure that anybody that works in that agency would be able to see any of our students. And yes, all the reports are not only shared with the parents, but gone over thoroughly during the meeting that the parent would have with the school after.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. So now we will transition to our committee representative reports, starting with MTEA, the MTEA president, Tim Dolan.
Good evening, board members, committee members and MTEA members. Thank you for coming out tonight. Boy, the Science Olympiad, congratulations to them. They were amazing. I have to say, my science experience is a little bit different in high school. I think I memorized a periodic table and since forgotten all of it. It didn't deter me, though. I do have a advanced degree in science, so I did go after science, even after all those experiences. So God bless the kids here, it's amazing. It was nice to hear all the security updates of what we're doing here in Montgomery to really keep faculty, staff, all staff and all students safe. So it's good that we'll keep that charge going. Here we are nearing the end, turning the corner, going to the end of the school year. We're in late May right now. We're approaching the unofficial start of summer coming up. This is a time when things get really, really busy, finishing everything up, trying to close everything out, but it's also really exciting. And there's lots of exciting things planned in our buildings to commemorate the end. My personal favorite was always Field Day or Fun Day, depending on what everyone calls it. So those are all some real exciting things that all buildings are involved in commemorating in some way. I'd like to also publicly thank and acknowledge our PTAs for the wonderful job that they did acknowledging Teacher Appreciation Week. I mean, between food, thoughtfulness, exciting themes, they really did a wonderful job and it's greatly appreciated. I know each school reached out in their own little way, but I certainly want to publicly thank them for what they do, not just on Teacher Appreciation Week, but what they do all year long to help the staff and students and fill in those little gaps and voids and really make a great experience for the students as they go through the year. So thank you, PTA. Next thing, I just want to highlight the last MTEA event that's coming up for the school year. You know, we've been sharing them throughout the year. This is the last one as we close out the year. The MTEA Equity Committee is wrapping up its DEI events with the MTEA Pride Celebration scheduled for June 10. At the venue, we will have crafts. At the venue, we will have crafts, we'll have games, giveaways, and a DJ to celebrate the LVGQIA+ community and its allies. Please note that all are welcome to attend. An RSVP is required for those attending, so you can go to the MTEA Facebook page for specifics and the expectations and a registration form. Be sure to sign up, this space is limited at the venue and also in the parking lot, so you wanna make sure you, you get signed up there. And lastly, I was mentioning just earlier, too, um, Monday is Memorial Day, you know, during this long weekend, um, like I said, the unofficial start to summer. We wanna just take a few moments to think about our brave members of the armed forces who made the ultimate sacrifice for our country. And be sure to just take some time to think about that, think about what they've done and, and enjoy the freedoms that we enjoy here in America. So, uh, just wanted to leave on that note. Thank you as always for your time. Have a good night.
Next, we'll hear our board members delegate and report representative reports. Hearing none, we will now move to our board committee reports, um, starting with Assessment, Regul, and Instruction Committee. It continues to be a privilege to serve as the chair, um, on the ACI Committee, um, along with the co-chair, Assistant Superintendent Damian Papa. The meeting was held on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, and it was a hybrid meeting. A board member submitted, uh, nine questions, um, to this board president, um, approximately six weeks ago. The ACI Committee, um, worked collaboratively in responding to those questions. There were three, um, that there was a request for more clarification of the information, um, that was, uh, required to be satisfactory. That particular board member provided that clarity. And now, uh, Mr. Papa and I are in the process, uh, of creating, um, similar to, um, an FAQ, um, workbook, if you will, not only to, um, respond, um, to that particular board member, but also to include that in our annual, um, board member orientation that typically takes month, takes place during the month of December. So thank you to that board member who submitted those questions, they were really insightful. And interestingly, it covers, um, the gamut of the district operations from, with a focus on, um, curriculum and instruction. Next, and thank you again, Superintendent McLaughlin, for responding to the community members' inquiry about Summerbird Blue, um, that will be, um, a choice book for, I think, 10th grade, um, CP classes and students, um, in resource. It's the new novel, and, um, it is placed on our Action Agenda Item Propose later, um, this evening. The book has diverse text and was rated highly, um, by the teacher, um, committee. And the author of the book is Akemi Dawn Bowman. A description or an overview of Summerbird Blue includes "A lyrical novel about grief, love, and finding oneself in the wake of tragic loss. Gorgeous prose and heartbreaking storytelling. Grabs your heart and won't let go." Next, we talked about the kindergarten curriculum. During the month of June, um, we will bring resources to have approved, um, for the curriculum to the ACI Committee. So the, the board members that participate, Board Member Spina, um, Board Member Harrison, Board Second VP Todd, um, we will explore the resources to support phonics and phonetic awareness, uh, within the curriculum. It is, um, asserted that there will be a robust and balanced, um, literacy block for the new full-day kindergarten. That will include imaginative, um, playtime and learning, um, through play, um, that will also be a part of the kindergarten day. When the students are playing, they are working on language skills and creativity and will have places and times, um, that the, um, learning play, if you will, is integrated into the curriculum. NJ SLA testing schedule was presented, um, and the dates range from May 8th, um, to it looks like May 23rd, um, to students in grades three through 11. And finally, uh, the school counselors and the, Ms. Gaylord, I believe, the director, um, of counseling, um, along with the Montgomery Rocky Hill Municipal Alliance, um, facilitated, you know, a really awesome, um, mental health, um, I guess symposium, if you will, I believe that was on Monday, um, May 15th. It was held at the high school at the IMPAC from 7:00, um, to 9:00 PM. That concludes the ACI report for today. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
I actually have a comment because I just wanted to, uh, take advantage of the opportunity that we have, um, a book submitted for approval. At the last board meeting, uh, there was a confusion in the community about our role in book selection, so I just wanted to use that example as a great, um, uh, opportunity to discuss that the board is submit, uh, that our educators submit books for our approval. We do not select books, we do not reject, um, we do not remove books, we actually just approve them. So, uh, thank you for taking time to, to evaluate. Uh, thank you, Ta Ta, for, uh, Curriculum Committee to go through approval, I mean, evaluation of the book and then submitting this book for, for approval for today. So we only approve books.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Board Member Philek?
Just a clarification question. Did you say that, um, members of ACI are looking into a new phonics program for the kindergarten or they're looking to enhance the phonics program?
They're looking to enhance the phonics program. Okay. Mm-hmm. Thank you. Board Member Dowling, anyone? Next, Board Member Spina, the Equity Committee report?
We did it at the last May meeting.
Okay. So we'll move on to Second VP Todd with Operations, Facilities, and Finance Committee report.
Thank you, Madam President.
Welcome.
OFF met on May 19th. First topic of discussion we talked about. I gave a board, um, the business administrator, Mr. Otten, gave an update on medical insurance implementation. I reviewed the rollout for open enrollment process for district employees with the switch to shift in ETNA. Our insurance broker, Brian Brown, has conducted virtual sessions reviewing the benefits. And there will be three in-person sessions as well. MTEA President Dolan stated that several of his union members had questions about enrollment process. Uh, Mr. Otten stated that Representative from Brian Brown will be in the buildings to assist the employees during enrollment for the three open sessions, three in-person sessions, excuse me. Next, moved on to interlocal services with Princeton BOE. Uh, Mr. Otten stated that the Princeton School District has requested to enter into a interlocal service agreement where Monte Montgomery mechanics will perform maintenance services on Princeton buses. Uh, the rate sheet, uh, is attached. The committee had a couple of questions slash concerns. Uh, we wanted to make sure that the Montgomery buses will take priority with respect to all repairs. In addition, in addition, we want to make sure that district mechanics are aware of the additional responsibilities that they will have. And also that any extra duties of mechanics will not entail any overtime or additional pay. We need to make sure that Montgomery buses are serviced first. We then talked about the food services renewal. We, uh, reviewed Marchio's renewal contract for fiscal year 24. We'd also had, some members also had a member, uh, meeting with Marchio's earlier in the week, and they are recommended that we stay with the National School Lunch Program, known as NSLP, and have offered a guarantee of income to the district of $150,000, which is less than the current contract due to participation rates. We also talked about school lunches, increasing, uh, increasing across the district, uh, about 25%, and that is attached as well. Participation and NSLP does not give us flexibility in the meals we serve, but provides us with higher revenues. We also met with, uh, Marchio's senior leadership, to ensure that everything goes smoothly and to address, address any current issues. In addition, they also noted that they will be changing the food service director for the next school year. The topic we've been talking about, uh, for several months is the school lunch deficit per school policy. The high school and the school principals have been getting involved, um, to contact parents, and one of the reasons why we do this is to make sure there are no issues at home in the family. The result of this phone, these phone calls has generated an additional $7,000 in collections. Uh, we still have some accounts in, in arrears. Next year, we talked about, uh, in Genesis, among the many forms that you all have to sign, uh, putting in a acknowledgement and a sign-off acknowledging how the pay-school system works. We also will be upgrading to a system known as Pay School Central next year, and Marchio's will be tasked to ensure it is implemented, implement, and parents know if they are behind the payments. Uh, this system will allow for better accountability. Also regarding the $150,000 guarantee, uh, Marchio's guaranteed that should income fall below $150,000, they will be responsible for making up that difference to make sure that the district receives $150,000 in food services. Mr. Otten also gave, uh, update on the various facility projects throughout the district. Uh, he discussed, at a previous meeting, he discussed the unspent referendum money from 2016 and how it will be utilized. Included projects include the paving at Cougar Stadium and OHS. The rear entrance at the high school by Cougar, uh, field is in bad shape, as most of you know, along some parts of OHS. Paving contractor will be on site, was that last, last Friday?
This weekend.
This weekend, to perform paving, work at both sites. Now, for all you pickleball fans, the town administrator has approached the board about turning a couple of the tennis courts right out here to propose, uh, pickleball courts. Uh, they're requesting that the board split the cost, just like we did when they redid the tennis courts out here. Um, the total cost will be approximately $25,000. They're asking the board to pay $12,500 of this. Uh, Mr. Grundy and Mr. Delgado are in favor of the plan. We did, the committee did have some concerns about, um, the impact it will have on parking as well as the, the field around the park, the, uh, the, the area, um, since there's no fee to play on tennis courts at UMS, and we feel that additional parking, uh, spaces may be needed. So we have not reached an agreement on that yet. Uh, Mr. Otten also stated that work at the ECC building is about 50% complete. Why I'm saying we move into the renovated section of the building this weekend, so that contractors may begin to work on parts of the building that have yet to be renovated. And he did share pictures of the completed renovations. That's it.
Any questions or comments for Second VP Todd for the OFS report? Board members? Okay, next, um, Policy and Communications Committee report?
I reported at the last meeting and we have not met since.
Thank you. Human Resource Committee report?
Yeah, we, we met on May 16th, Tuesday. Uh, it was a short meeting, but it was mostly on personnel agenda.
Great. Um, the officers' report will be delivered at our next scheduled, um, open public board meeting in June. So at this time, it is recommended that the Board of Education approve the minutes at the following board meetings. April 25th, Executive Session and Business Meeting. May 9th, Executive Session Workshop and Business Reading. So I move that we approve the aforementioned minutes. So move. Second.
Mr. Carlson?
Yes.
Ms. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Philek?
Yes.
Ms. Franco Herman?
Yes.
Ms. Spina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
Ms. Philakajernigan?
Yes.
Dr. Spence Wallace?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. So at this time, the Board of Education acknowledges the correspondence received, um, as published on page three of our agenda this evening. Now, it is time for new business from the public. The Board of Education, again, welcomes and encourages input from the public. Members of the public are allotted one opportunity to bring any new business to the board for maximum of up to three minutes per speaker. All comments must be directed to the board. Remember to state your name and address and write both in the note provided on the podium. Being mindful of privacy rights regarding students, employees, and members, and to avoid any potential liability on the part of the speaker, the board discourages defamatory and discourteous remarks. The public comment questions at the meeting are not designed as question-and-answer sessions. We may need to refer an issue to the superintendent if it has not been handled through the appropriate chain of command. Responses may be provided at the end of this session. So Board Secretary Otten, the new business public comment is now open.
Shreeth Thakor, Skilman, New Jersey. Good evening, everyone. My name is Shreeth Thakor, and I'm alumni of Montgomery High School class of 2022. As some of you might remember here, I spoke at one of these meetings last year, last summer, in opposition to the new sex ed curriculum pushed by the Board of Education, certain members of the Board of Education, with the help of an activist group known as High Times. While despite the fact that certain members of the board were ousted in the last election, uh, those in favor of the sex ed curriculum have pushed on. They have moved forward with implementing a curriculum and required readings, as we've seen today, that promote a false and dangerous view of human sexuality and even hosting a drag queen story hour on June 10th. And I've chosen to spoke, speak tonight to express my deep opposition to such developments. Let's be absolutely clear. Gender ideology is false, all of it. First, it posits that gender is a fluid social construct, defined by each person for themselves, and then turns around and says that people are simply born in the wrong body or trapped in the wrong body, which is born transgender. It claims that the truth is whatever a person says it is, but also that people can define truth in their own way and that there's a real truth to be found within each person, which is apparently why we have to mutilate them if physical reality doesn't align with their version of the truth. No one who supports it can define what it feels like to be a woman when you're not one without resorting to the very gender stereotypes they have always considered archaic. It never explains why one's feelings define their gender, but no other physical quality. Is a human who identifies as a walrus a walrus? Should a 15-year-old who identifies as 70 receive social security benefits? I want to emphasize that we need to love and support those who might be struggling with gender dysphoria, but the affirmation of a lie is an inauthentic form of love. This isn't bigotry, this is biology, and the consequences of this have been cleared. We have seen a thousand percent rise in gender dysphoria cases in the last five years solely concentrated among young people. That's not positive people who are just suddenly coming out because society accepts them. That's social contagion on a scale we have never seen before, and it is a social contagion that is doing permanent irreversible damage to our children. Parents, this new curriculum is not just an attack under rights, it's more than that. It's, this is not just an attack under religion, whether that be Christian, Muslim, or something else. This is a blatant attack on reality, and the casualties of this attack are the children. And I seriously hope that those on the board who continue to support this reconsider their position. Thank you.
How do you follow that? My name is Dante Buscemi, and I live in Skilman. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you. At the last board event meeting, I expressed concern over Montgomery Schools discussing issues of transgenderism with students who are in their early teens. He said it much better than I could. One other participant that evening explained that our teachers were doing so in order to make it clear to all students that they should treat those following alternative sexual lifestyles... sexual lifestyles with respect. This is certainly a noble goal, yet I remain skeptical. If we want students to respect each other, we need only emphasize that people who are different from us should be respected, even when we disagree with their lifestyles or their opinions. That is surely enough to meet the objective of treating all people as one's equals. When it comes to choosing a sexual lifestyle, however, I believe that that should be addressed by the students themselves when they are old enough to make such a choice rationally, maturely and independently. I stress maturely because many choices involving sexuality, like that of transgenderism, are difficult if not impossible to rescind. Think about the many choices you made as a young teenager. Were they all sound? Do you regret none of them? I, like the vast majority of adults, would not repeat the same actions we now consider to be these days. Moreover, transgenderism and other matters relating to sexuality, as seemingly discussed in the Montgomery School Systems, are offensive to some parents' moral and religious beliefs. I say seemingly discussed, I've changed my mind, but I think they are being discussed openly, as I've heard tonight and what I've seen on the billboards of the school. And so I think such issues should be discussed at home, not in school. My fear is that young school-aged people are often easily influenced, and I fear that they may become brainwashed into making choices they will later regret. I am not saying that our teachers are brainwashing students, or that's what I wrote, but now I think I changed my mind. I think you are brainwashing them into making choices they will later regret. I haven't taught at Middle Six College for 50 years, I know that as a fact, that teachers have a tremendous effect on students. I don't say that we should eliminate the teaching of sexual mores, or that we should not encourage our children to respect those who are different from them in whatever respect, but when it comes to such controversial topics as transgenderism, I think we need to be careful. During my time at Middle Six, I served as chairperson of the English Department, and I led the effort to design the English composition and literature curriculum with the help of many, many fine colleagues. By the way, among them was Reginald Luke, who once chaired this Board of Education. Anyway, one of our courses was developed was gay and lesbian literature, and we included gay authors, like James Waldwood, your favorite, and we included many great authors in our writing literature courses, but we never counselled or advised students to adopt that lifestyle. In fact, we never advised them to adopt any lifestyle. That wasn't up to us, it was up to them. At the last meeting as well, one of our speakers argued that parents should now not interfere with the kinds of reading materials students are exposed to, and that is a matter solely for teachers. No, that is simply not right. The teachers did not give birth to and are not raising these children. The parents are, and as such, they must have a voice in what is taught in schools and what the students are required to read. A new movement is spreading across the country whereby some states are allowing tax monies to public student. This allows the taxes parents pay for public education to be spent on private, parochial and home education. Why is this so? Because the parents are frankly fed up with being told how their kids will be educated.
Mr. Buscemi, your three-minute topic, thank you so much for your time. Thank you.
I just want to take this moment to express our appreciation toward Joanna for your outstanding dedication and the commitment to our community as a valued member of B O E. Your extreme care and generally concern for our students and parents are all noticed. Our resident fear that you were asked to resign, we strongly disagree with this and we believe you are an elected representative who holds a crucial responsibility for the development of our education system. On your dedication to your work and the community and that in your consistent effort to raise suggestions and support parents, I also want to emphasize the importance of your effort to support our parents. You ensure that everyone is heard and valued. This is your strong commitment to inclusive and responsive governance. I believe that your position as a board member is not merely a title, but a reflection of trust placed in you by the waters who elected you. Once again, thank you for your outstanding work and continued support.
I don't have too much to say tonight, and I apologize for arriving late, I was working, but I feared there was an update on security and safety, and I'm sorry I missed that because I wanted to address that clearly what the real danger to our students and young people in schools today in the country is guns. It's not books, it's not choosing your sexual lifestyle, Diana, when Mr. Buscemi decided to be straight, it's guns. And I will go back and look at what you said, but I think it's important to make sure our students remain safe, and I'm very grateful you live in New Jersey and where we have some of the strictest gun laws there are. A year ago, a gunman in Uvalde killed 21 people and injured 17 more. The Washington Post has done a story about how many kids have been affected by gun violence, not just kids who have been killed, but affected, and that's 350,000 since the start of Columbine, and that's just a horrifying statistic. So I'm glad that Montgomery is on this, and I think that's where our energy should be, not on the drag queen story hour almost a year later. Ms. Philek, I sent you an email about the books. I am not confused. You recommended replacing books in the meeting, it's on the video, not approving, replacing books with books that make our kids feel more positive. It's on the video. I watched it, I was at the meeting, you said it. And I'm still awaiting a reply. You are dedicated to your job on the board. I sent you an email with a bunch of questions two weeks ago, I haven't heard back from you. That's all I have, thank you.
My name is Rich Specht, I live in Belmeade. So first of all, I want to say I was excited to be here to see the Science Olympia. I mean, that's just, I think that's kind of why we're here, and it was exciting to see the number of people that were here, the commitment of the administration and the teachers that was shown tonight, and I just think that that's great. As one of, I guess, the ousted board members, I don't know why we're still talking about the drag queen story hour. If parent choice is important and it was clear that this was not a board sanctioned event, and the parents who did attend knew full well what they were doing, that seems like parent choice to me. I do think that there are times where, I wonder if Montgomery is getting to be at a crossroads. What does the Montgomery Township community want in its schools? Do we want it to be about culture wars? Do we want, or do we really want to be focusing on the education of our students and their academic success? It seems that we get into a situation where we go into extremes. We have the extremes where, you know, that some of the comments that were made tonight, where everything is on one side, and we have people on the other side that are going to take an opposite view, and we can't really seemingly talk about the issues at hand. So whether it's overturning the vote of the community on the one side, or board members should be forced to resign because of what they said at a board meeting, I don't see why we have to get to that point. But, as I said, I was one of the ousted members, so, well, go on. So I think that looking at the academics and what the results of the school are important. And so to that end, the board president this evening talked about questions that were brought up to the A C I committee. I think that would be a great topic to talk about at a board meeting. I'd love to hear comments about that on each side of it. So if it's, you know, if it's the F A Qs that's going to be done at the board orientation, I think that that would be better done here, and I'd love to have comments going on. At a broader level, I noticed that the board has four goals listed at the top of the agenda, one of which is academics, one of which is specifically about universal design for learning U D L. I don't think I've ever heard anything at the board table talking about what U D L is. Are we successful at it? Are there measurable results because we're adopting U D L or not?
Todd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening to the board, my name is Heidi from Skilman. So I graduated from Montgomery last year in 2022, and I recently completed my first year of college, and it is with this perspective as a Montgomery alum and a current college student that I find myself up here today. So all in all, I'm very satisfied with the education I received in Montgomery and how it prepared me for my post-secondary experiences, and I'd like to see this district continue to set its students up for success. But I'm concerned that certain events that have transpired since my time here and the direction in which this district may be headed will not be conducive to doing so. Now, in particular, I want to express concern about a comment made at the March 28th board event meeting about reviewing classroom materials and replacing books that trigger negative feelings with books with a positive message. And I know board member Philek, you just clarified that the board does not necessarily select or remove books, but I think the power the board holds in approving books and how that shapes the development of our curriculum is not to be understated, and I would assume similar considerations about the feelings they book might elicit when the board chooses to or not to approve a book, even if they don't necessarily select or remove them. So on the surface, I think it can be easy to agree with the sentiment of this statement. We all love to engage with media that makes us feel good. However, the implications and nuances of this message are troubling to me for a few reasons, and I'd like to offer two unique lenses as both a Montio alum and a current college student for the board moving forward with curriculum reviews and book approvals. First, I find the potential for an overstepping power in this statement troubling, in particular, what is meant by negative emotions? Who gets to define what negative emotions are and when they become severe enough to pull or fail to approve a certain book for our curriculum? The statement presumes that would be based on what a few select people who may or may not represent the majority of our community believe. In doing so, there's an implicit control of what stories and ideals students have access to. The statement is also problematic and violates certain students' experiences and emotions over others. In particular, a book that might elicit negative emotions, whatever that is arbitrarily defined as, may be a book that helps another student process their personal experiences or serves as an empowering source of resonitation. I'd like to acknowledge that both and all sets of feelings and experiences are valid and are worthy of having conversations about. I also currently work as a volunteer educator at my university's Prevention, Advocacy and Resource Center, educating students about sexual violence on campus. If there's one thing I've learned from my experience in this role, it would be that not engaging with and discussing difficult and sensitive topics that elicit negative emotions does not make them go away. Replacing or failing to approve books that may be more difficult to read eliminates opportunities for students to learn how to discuss difficult topics in a mature and respectful manner and to process difficult emotions that might arise in what is hopefully a state of control and supportive environment. Montgomery likes to pride itself on how it prepares its graduates for four-year colleges in particular, but also more generally for life after. As someone who has been in college for a year now and has encountered fears at varying levels of maturity and college readiness, I think Montgomery has an apparent role in creating holistic learners and citizens who are active members of their communities, which includes having the ability to be receptive to a variety of perspectives and engaging difficult conversations relevant to their daily lives. I'm concerned that showing students many books that elicit negative emotions will impair their abilities to do so. Thank you.
My name is Marissa Connors, and I live on Whipple Will Way. As a 2022 M H S graduate and a public policy student who just finished her first year at Gettysburg College, I think I'm uniquely qualified to speak on the potential restructuring of Montgomery School curricula. I will do this by focusing on the importance of diverse learning materials and building students' critical thinking skills. By diverse and inclusive, I mean a curriculum that discusses a variety of religions, races, ethnicities, cultures, sexual orientations and more. In general, people place their beliefs about social identities and social differences on their personal experiences. This is called a web of belief, a concept introduced by Harvard philosopher W. V. O. Klein. Each person's beliefs are limited by their own experiences. However, as an avid reader from the age of five, I can tell you that reading significantly expanded my web of belief. It has helped me learn about other cultures, identities and experiences in a way that would not possible without books. The point I'm making here is that students will continue to base their judgments and interactions on their own lives until they read about other people's lived experiences, whether this is through fiction or nonfiction. Through reading, I've seen my own experiences reflected a thousand times over, and I've read about new experiences too. The beauty of having a diverse set of learning materials is that it allows students to feel supported and seen while also pushing them to consider the circumstances outside of their own. This builds intellectual empathy, a way of seeing how other people's experiences shape their beliefs and allows students to better identify with each other. People who don't know or understand each other's stories are more likely to be hateful and discriminatory, and I think we can all agree that we want Montgomery students to support each other in a positive way. Additionally, if students can read a wide range of materials, they will develop strong critical thinking skills. They will be able to decide for themselves what they agree with and why. Yes, students will be uncomfortable at times, and I can say with confidence that learning the realities of social issues such as food insecurity and systemic oppression was not comfortable for me. This discomfort pushed me to examine why I was feeling that way and to confront the preconceived notions I had about my own privilege so I could be compassionate to the people around me. Comfort is not where we learn. So far, I have explained how a diverse curriculum is useful to students. I also encourage the board to consider the opposite. If inclusive books are removed from the curriculum or banned altogether, students with similar experiences or identities may feel that something about themselves is off limits, dangerous or wrong. This would certainly elicit negative emotions for that student, even if other students do not notice the change. Please think about the messages we send to our students, especially those who are less often represented in books or media.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. I understand that the majority of the people in this room do not consider themselves students. However, I believe that learning is a lifelong pursuit and that there's no point in time when an individual is done expanding their horizons. From a future policymaker to the policymakers on this board, please consider the disproportionate impact that removing inclusive books from our curricula or choosing not to approve inclusive books to our curricula will have as we review the materials available to students. Thank you for your time.
Janet Church, Montgomery. After a board member was asked to resign last month, I did not hear support from her or by her colleagues on the board or any corrections to the resident's false statements at that or the following board meeting or this board meeting. However, the board president was observed embracing this resident at the conclusion of the last board meeting. What kind of messages being sent to the rest of the board and the public who observed this? It would be a gracious gesture if the board president would apologize to the members of the community she has in the past interrupted during public comments when they mentioned people by name. The attorney stated several meetings ago, there is no such prohibition. Something as simple as, I'm sorry I was misinformed or misunderstood their rules would go a long way. No one is perfect, and these are the types of lessons we can model for our students. Now, on to some questions. I would hope we would get some answers tonight rather than self-serving political speeches. Everyone's time would be better served by responding to public comments in a gracious, responsible, professional, transparent and empathetic manner and conveying how this board plans to get our business school rankings up again and become more fiscally responsible. Given the material presented to you in April, have you uncovered who leaked the South Africa trip over request to M T E A president, Vice President Karen Kevorkian? If so, what was the result of the finding? If not, what do you plan to do about this? Has the board agreed to sever all ties with Professor Rubenstein and L M C I given the conflict of interest with this significant other and the sharing of private school matters as well as his directive to use personal email instead of school email and not providing data to support his claims after offering to do so? If not, why not? What is being done about the revelation that four members of the South African delegation appear to be employees of Rutgers and Professor Rubenstein? Are they abusing our school district's time and finances to attend a conference which, by the way, was not professional development for them but being presented by them as facilitators as documented in the South African as documented in the South Africa trip emails, presentations, and notes? Other New Jersey districts did not spend taxpayer dollars for their South Africa travel. Why did this district have to do so? In December, the board president was asked about postponing the vote for the expense for the South Africa trip to January to allow further due diligence. She stated it could not be postponed due to needing to go to County Executive Superintendent for approval in time for travel arrangements to be made, and that approval could take 10 to 14 days. At last month's Board of Ed meeting, the president emphatically stated that the County Executive Superintendent approved the South Africa trip before the expense was put to a vote by the Board of Ed.
Thirty seconds.
Please explain this discrepancy. As board members, you will be held individually accountable if you do not act on the information that is provided to you. Think of the integrity of the board as well as your duty to the students and to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Francine Pfeffer, Five Mystic Dives, Skillman, once again. Nice to see all of you a second time up here. I just want to put on a timer because I don't have written words, so I could go on for way too long if I don't time myself. Because, you know, we all like to hear ourselves speak. I would just like to address a few things you said tonight. One is, you're doing a kindergarten curriculum. I hope as the child of an early childhood educator, you mentioned learning through play, and I just want to reiterate how important that is. People often think that play doesn't teach children, but really, children learn more when they're in early childhood from being in a block corner where they are doing hands-on math or a grocery store, what looks like play in a grocery store that is also an excellent opportunity to teach them math and literacy, depending on how you do it. Play really can teach so much more to young children who are not physically ready, emotionally ready, or intellectually ready to sit at a desk and learn. A lot of people think children should come home with A is for apple and B is for boy. But for most children in kindergarten, that is actually not developmentally appropriate. There's a term, DAP, developmentally appropriate practice, and I really hope that this district, in looking at kindergarten, sticks with what is really developmentally appropriate. A lot of people say every child should be ready for kindergarten, but we have that backwards. Kindergarten should be ready for every child, and that is really what we should be thinking about, is not forcing children. You know, if you, if a child is not ready to read, you can struggle them through it, and they will learn to read, but they will not enjoy it. And if you teach them when they are actually ready, then it clicks and they love reading. And it is very painful to teach a five- or six-year-old who is not ready to read to force them to read, but when they are, it is much easier. The other thing I would love to tell all of you that I would like to talk about is Mr. Sullivan, who was up here, the Science Olympia teacher, he said he hates the term "learning loss," and I am all with him because students during COVID, they did not experience learning loss. Learning loss is summer slide. To have learning loss, you have to have had it, and that's not what kids went through. They never got it. I like to use the term "interrupted learning." I'm on a one-woman mission to change this term in the New Jersey legislature, and every once in a while, I get there. Interrupted learning is really what happened because kids never got what they were supposed to have when schools shut in March. And then the following year, when we were in basically a hybrid kind of remote year, their learning was interrupted, and even the year after, right now, I got 30 seconds left, even the year after that, we were still in interrupted learning because my son just had COVID for a week. It's still happening in March. He was absent from school for a week. So as we look at test scores and start talking about how, you know, our kids didn't do well, they didn't do that, we have to remember that their learning was interrupted, not only that first year of COVID, it was interrupted again and again during the hybrid year, and it is still being interrupted. And so people should remember that when we are talking about where our students are. We need to meet them where they are and bring them forward. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. I'm Asma Ahmed. I have three kids, two in high school and one in lower middle school. I'd just like to say thank you to all of you for all your services and especially making Monti a very safe place and inclusive for all our students. Thank you so much. Thank you.
My name is Charles Horn, Skillman, New Jersey. Just would like to share, had an opportunity to review the NJ DOE 2021-2022 New Jersey School Performance Report. With respect to percentage of testers meeting slash exceeding expectations, the Orchard Hill Elementary School was not graded because data was not supplied. Village Elementary School for English and Language Arts was not met. For math, not met. Lower Middle School, not met for English. Excuse me. Superintendent, paying attention? Thank you. Lower Middle School, English and Language Arts, not met. Math, not met. Upper Middle School, English and Language Arts, met. Math, not met. Montgomery High School, met for EOL and met for math. Some other observations I made in terms of students and teachers as identifying as non-binary and undesigned gender in all five schools, that was less than or equal to 1%. For teachers at the Orchard Hill Elementary School, Lower Middle School, Upper Middle School, and Montgomery High School, it was less than or equal to 5%. And for the DES, it was less than or equal to 10%. So it seems to me that the percentage of non-binary and undesigned gender is not towards the children, but it's more towards the teachers. In terms of confirmed gender incidences, that is confirmed, there were two. One in the Village Elementary School and one in the Upper Middle School, total of two. For confirmed sexual slash orientation incidences, there was one at the Upper Middle School. So there was a total of three. Now, I would agree that one is too many, but it was three. I think that's all I can say. Thank you.
Any other team members presenting the visit to the board at this time? Thank you.
Mark, let me. So I have a point of agreement with my comrade. So school safety is an issue. Mass shootings are an issue. Four of them were by trans shooters. So are we going to blame people in general or are we going to say, hey, there's a mental component that nobody wants to address? As far as approving books, let's look at the approval list. Is there one? Because when you go on the curriculum, it tells books. And when I asked a teacher, hey, what about this book? It's not on the list. And I was pointed back to the list and said, well, this is some of the books. When I asked, hey, can I get these books in advance? There is this thing that you guys do. It's a little planning, right? It gets approved. So what I was told, that I could not get that ahead of time. Okay, can I get it after? Because I'd like to discuss it with my kid. And I was pointed back to the list. Every teacher has her teaching plan, right? Approved ahead of time. I can't get a copy of that? Why? What's the problem? What about the books? What's wrong with that? If I can't read the books, you're reading it to my kid, my kid has questions? What are you talking about? I don't know. What book was it? Oh, I don't know. He's six years old. What is, why is so secret? So if you want a list, you want to approve books, there's people talking about books? Okay, cool. Let's put the Quran in there. Let's put the Bible. Let's put all of these books, okay? As far as we're teaching kids, what are we teaching kids? Where are grades? They're not where they should be, okay? I can tell you, my kids, my kids grades are not there. I've had to come to the school and ask for more help. And when I have to bring in a specialist and the specialist has to come in on my dime and say, hey, look, my child was tested. He's reading below level. But I was told, no, he's reading, he's reading at a grade level. Not only is he reading below level, he was not considered a reader whatsoever. That was on my dime. So I have to come back to special services, and somebody says to me, oh, just because you're squeaky, you're a squeaky wheel, you think you should get what? You should get special services? Yeah. That was made by an administrator.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, that, that type of response is not acceptable. So you want to teach about all this other stuff, but we can't even get the basics right. Something more needs to be done here. And this book banning and this, nobody's looking to banning books. It's about what's in the books. There's some things that are not appropriate for kids, especially at a younger age, no matter what their story is, gender, whatever they want to think, I don't care. That's, that's your life. Your parents allow you? Feel free.
Good evening. My name is Megan Murphy, and I've been a teacher at Montgomery for 20 years. I am currently working at LMS, where I am also serving as Vice President of the MTEA. I'm here tonight to share how proud I am to have devoted nearly half of my life to a school district and community that deeply values education. Students and families here see how a great education opens doors to a multitude of opportunities. I have collaborated with students, parents, teachers, and administrators to learn what challenges we face and to make plans to improve everyone's circumstances. I am proud to have served the MTEA numerous capacities, from newsletters, which gives you an indication of exactly how I live in Montgomery, to evaluations committee and Vice President. While serving as evaluations committee chair in 2012, I worked with district leadership, building administrators, and teachers to assist with the transition to the day of an evaluation tool, when the state mandated new evaluation tools for the state's educators and support professionals. Everyone involved in that committee volunteered numerous hours to ensure Montgomery's success with the new statewide initiative. With the voices of each collaborator sharing their perspectives on professional development and the rollout of the new evaluation system, the transition was successful. Administrators worked with each other to calibrate their scoring to hone their new tool. MTEA evaluations committee members and other teacher leaders gathered feedback from staff and shared it with the building and district administrators to improve the tools being used by the district. I am grateful to work in a place that recognizes that one person cannot have all of the answers for all of the questions and challenges that arise in a dynamic field like education. It takes the expertise, experience, and perspectives of many to come to feasible and fair policies as well as rigorous and appropriate curriculum. I beamed with pride watching former students' requests that the board consider having Eid as a day off for future school calendars. These students see the power of sharing their opinions and perspectives with the decision-makers in their lives. They understand that what they say is valuable and can have an impact on future students. They have learned this from their families, community, teachers, and schools. I encourage the students to keep sharing with all of us what is important to them and what they need from us, the adults and decision-makers in their lives. We are all here to work in concert to serve them and the possibilities their futures hold. Thank you.
Good morning. Sorry, good evening. My name is Michelle Barbarash, and I've had the pleasure of teaching at Village Elementary School the last 10 years. This year, like many others, we have built a strong community where staff and students have a sense of belonging and connection. We have continued our commitment to having our students see themselves and their loved ones represented in different ways. Throughout the year, we have continued to diversify our discussions, lessons, and celebrations. For example, for Native American Heritage Month, we highlighted the people who are indigenous to Montgomery. During Black History Month, our hallway was filled with people who made tremendous contributions to our country. Then during Women's History Month, DES students created posters stamps to highlight the important women in their life. And for Ramadan, students and staff from different cultures created a special video to highlight their own traditions. Teachers and staff have received a lot of positive support from families this year, sharing how meaningful these celebrations have been. This year, once again, our students have also been involved in service projects such as pennies for puppies and young scholars. These activities and projects, we've seen students, as we've seen students work through these projects, they've become more empathetic and loving towards others. As a staff member, I feel proud to witness and be a part of all of this. And lastly, I want to share that tonight and this afternoon, we had our third-grade orientation for our second graders moving up. This was another way we build community between the two schools, and it was great to see how excited the staff and students are to welcome the new third graders. So we look forward to many more community-building events, and we want to thank you for your continued support throughout the school year. Thank you.
I don't need to write my name again, do I? No. Okay, so it's very upsetting to see some people come up here and speak so disrespectfully. We really should model good behavior to our kids and not speak rudely or disrespectfully to anybody, especially known as board members who are our neighbors and volunteer their time to be here. So on behalf of the people who do speak rudely, I apologize. The previous person stated that there were just a few incidents of harassment, but it's very, it's very likely that these statistics do not reflect the actual number of students who are bullied. A lot of these bullying things happen on the playground where it's not documented. Bullying is harmful, and as a result, not understanding it and accepting those who may be different from us cause irreparable damage. So that's already.
Hello. So I want to say we keep talking about diversity and inclusion amongst our community. I think we also needed that amongst our board members, which is important, hence why it's really nice that we have Joanna and Anya to do this, to make sure that all the voices are represented for all the people. So it's not just one view. When it's one view, it's no longer, it's a singular view. It's myopic. You lose it all. We want to include all voices in things. It's just a matter of making sure it's done appropriately. Do we ever think that what we're implementing may have actually a backlash? Has it ever been brought up to anybody at any point in time? Is everything always good 100%? When you think that, you should be worried because nothing is ever 100%. There's been racial slurs to my daughter. Now, she is the same complexion as me. How is that possible? Well, we didn't report. Okay. Second, my daughter was confused at one point. All this was brought up in class way too soon for her. She has a very young mind. All my children, I have three, and all of them take that information differently at different times. It was very confusing. She never had a crush. All of a sudden, she's like, what am I? What is my sexual orientation? Whatever, what am I? And I was just like, we had to have a huge conversation. She was very scared because she's never had a crush. What does that mean? But we're not addressing that because you're not the parents. The parents have to address that. People want, everybody should be accepted, but it doesn't mean everybody should be agreed upon what you do. I have friends who have lifestyles I do not agree with, but I love my friends dearly. So we have to look at it this way. It can't be, everything has to be 100% all the time. It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work that way in real life. We're not talking about mental health reality. We have a day after tests to have mental health day. Do we have that in a real workday? We're not addressing mental health in a real day, real life situation. Do you all get to take off after a bad day? You just tell your bosses, I can't. I can. It doesn't work that way. We need to incorporate. We need to incorporate in our daily lives and how we manipulate things with stress and how we approach that. We are not doing a good job representing people. Our school district is family on, on the whole. Other districts have bolstered up. We have not lost those sauce. We are really not focused on what we need to be.
Thirty seconds.
And so therefore, we won't have to worry about where we're spending our money because there'll be no more people here because I went to spend my taxes and the money I spent on my house in this town. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Gabby Hagan from Valhalla. So a little over a month ago, I found out that principals and board member, a board president is using personal email for the school business. So according to policy, I am allowed to request those emails. So when I requested them, I was told you are not in possession of them. And when I questioned it, I was told that the board president deleted them. So I was wondering, what are you going to do about it? Have you discussed it and is it going to be addressed? Thank you.
Sorry, this is my first time doing something like this.
Hi, my name is Sophia Robb. I'm from Skilman. I'm currently a junior at Montgomery High School and I wanted to address some of the things that I have like heard and received from this board meeting so far. And I wanted to tell you all today, I've never been advised by any teacher, by any staff member, or by any administrator, anyone at all related to the school on how I should identify, whether that be with my sexual orientation or my gender. I have never been told who I should be. I have never been told how I should be. And the environment that is currently and that how I feel is currently at school has been nothing of love and support and mutual respect. What we are taught is mutual respect and that no one has ever told me that I have to use preferred pronouns for anyone, or no one has told me that I have to use different language, no one has told me I have to do anything. So as a student, I wanted to just kind of say thank you to the board for that representation and that inclusion and not saying that creating an environment that is truly nurturing for all students and not just to cater to some students is incredibly important to the value of education for our students. Not just, you know, reference of a crazy, crazy divided time. Now is the time for unity, not disunity. And I truly, truly believe that that is the environment that is reflected at Montgomery High School right now. And I just wanted to put that out there and say thank you. And thank you to the administration and all of that for creating that amazing respectful environment.
I don't come to these meetings often because I always have to open my mouth and I get very nervous. This is my personal belief that being gay is just not something that's taught. I love that young woman's comments. If a kid reads a book about gay young child, young person, it's not going to turn them gay. It's just absurd. My, my kids are long out of the school district. My kids came out of the school district with an inclusive, compassionate education. And I'm very grateful to the school district that when they got out in the real world, they suddenly didn't realize, oh my God, there's gay people out here. It's transgender. They've learned it in school and I hope they continue to learn this in school. And that's all I have to say. I don't need my time limit. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kate LeManion. I'm an eighth grade language arts teacher. And I just wanted to speak to my experience of being the co-chair of the Instructional Strategies Committee of the School Leadership Team at U M S. We're a group of teachers and other specialists, as well as the Language Arts and Social Studies Supervisor, who've been collaborating to distill those various ideas about universal design for learning and intervention strategies into the ways that they will best function in our building specifically. And I'm so fortunate to be on this committee of professionals who are willing to meet before the school day starts so we can talk about these things and deliver these concepts before a staff of teachers who intern are willing to serve our students. They're willing and eager to serve the students. So some of the things that we have been making strides in this year are kind of putting all the pieces together. So we have gathered input from teachers and students. We've taken into account district initiatives. We've kind of incorporated professional guidance and then we've also integrated some research. And so we're, you know, focused on making sure that the work we're bringing forward is sustainable and it's going to be able to be built upon so it doesn't, you know, fall flat or, you know, get overturned the next year. And we've seen an increase in positive results, such as more consistency and uniformity across our Google Classroom, expectations across Google Classrooms. And we've also seen increased student self-sufficiency and executive functioning skills when it comes to the tools that we as a district have access to, like Google Classroom. As an early career teacher, I've been very grateful to have this leadership opportunity. I don't think that's, you know, super common in every district, so that's something that I've been grateful to be a part of. And then also feel grateful that my voice and my perspective has been valued and respected. And in addition to our committee, the Instructional Strategies Committee, I know I personally, as well as the other teachers in the building, have benefited from the subcommittees of the School Leadership Team. And so this is all just to say that I'm optimistic about the trajectory of our school community at all these different levels. So thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Jones. I have been in Montgomery for a quarter of a century. So it kind of makes me the elder person at the high school. Now I need glasses, can't read anything without them. But I want to just first, I don't know the young lady that spoke from the high school. I have not met her, but I'm super proud of her and her ability to come up here and speak in public was tremendous. And that's really what makes and identifies the high school. So tonight I'm here just kind of, I want to celebrate because I want to really just kind of make things fun and, and understand what the great things are that are going on at the high school. I have three pages. I hope I can get through them. I probably won't be able to. But just to go through just the laundry list and I want to identify some of the teachers that have really made Montgomery High School the school that it is. So starting within the English department, we have had the Pennsylvania Shakespeare Festival, who's brought to the high school with Ms. Kim, Ms. Matthews, Ms. Tobago, Ms. Ricardi, and Ms. Cauterie. The freshman English class had a field trip to see Romeo and Juliet. Mr. Minor, Ms. Quittneck, Ms. Doyle, Ms. Tobago, Ms. Satar, Mr. Dominic, Mr. Ricardi, Ms. Thotz. The podcast was published several times throughout the year. It's also in print and online with Mr. Minor. The lit mag was created, writing publication of art and literature. It's in the works throughout the year. It was published in June. Ms. Cauterie and Mrs. Merzurrieta are part of, part of that. Our GSA club has hosted numerous lunch bunches throughout the year with Mrs. Merzurrieta. There is a National Honor Society, which had volunteer opportunities, including peer tutoring. They also held an induction of new members in April, Ms. Kim and Ms. Freego. History department has had mock trial with Mr. Stemler. They finished second in the county. Forensic speech and debate club competed in five competitions, placing one to five in every competition throughout New Jersey, held by Ms. Murphy. Model U N competed in Hershey P A. They were awarded outstanding delegation. Youth and government competed in Princeton, but again, outstanding delegation. Both held by Mr. Washburn. Black Student Union had a field trip to our nation's capital to visit the National Museum of African American History and Culture, chaired by Ms. Douglas, Ms. Marshall, Ms. Menneon, Mr. Washburn. They also had a Black History Month movie series, along with Women's History Month movie series throughout the months of February and March. UNICEF will be hosting the Colarun, June 4th, to raise money to benefit for the Ukraine under the leadership of Ms. Marshall. Science department competed in various awards throughout the season and the state tournament placed second, narrowly missing a first place finish, led by Mr. Berluso, Mr. Amish, and Mr. Sullivan.
Thirty seconds.
I got through the first page. The laundry list goes on and on. You know, there are just so many teachers to highlight throughout our district. I'll share this with the board so that they can see and just really celebrate the number of people and the, the team that, that comes together to put, you know, the school and doing all the extras. We've had 189 competing athletes this year, kind of to highlight the athletes. A total of 18 athletes have committed to wanting to play in college. My time is up. I'll end up with a quote. I'd like to quote Henry Ford, "Coming together is the beginning. Keeping together is progress. Working together is success."
Good evening. My name is Dr. Adam Packle. I am a school teacher here in Montgomery. I have taught in both U M S and Orchard, Orchard Elementary School. I am also a 28-year combat veteran of the United States Army. Thank you for the opportunity to share just a few of the great things that are going on at Orchard Hill Elementary School. Under the leadership of Dan and Lisa, our school continues to grow and thrive as we prepare for full day kindergarten and still exceed the needs of our current student population every day. Yesterday, our student, excuse me, yesterday, our second grade students completed the last of 19 musical performances. This year, our musical adaptation of the book, The Mitten, in which we included instruments, acting, dance, and the singing of authentic folk Ukrainian songs in the Ukrainian language. This was also a connection to our love of lifelong reading as the book that we chose was also read to the first graders and they, they got to see it come to life on the stage as done by the second graders. June 15th, the MHS choral students will debut Let's Party with Casey the Cougar. This song, excuse me, this song is the capstone of the district-wide Sing Me a Story project, a years-long endeavor that on that night, Mrs. Perovitch's class in Orchard Hill, her students will hear for the first time the musical interpretation of the stories that these second graders wrote about inclusion and love as interpreted by the students of the U M S Composer's Consortium and the composer, Mr. Mitchell Hernandez of Montclair University. Finally, on June 14th, Mrs. Teresa Foltini will again lead our school in our annual Flag Day event, entitled this year, This is Our Flag. Along with music and history, the students will explore how each of us come from different places and perspectives, but as Americans, we are one made of many different and valuable parts.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Will there be another for new business to the board public comment? Seeing done. Our new business public comment portion of our agenda is now closed. Thank you, everyone, for your participation. Superintendent McLaughlin, did you jot down any questions that you're able to answer at this time? While you're looking, I would like to clarify with regard to South Africa. Yes, yes. So I do know that Superintendent McLaughlin engaged in preliminary review and conversation with the county superintendent prior to placement of the opportunity on the December agenda. And it was at that time that County Superintendent Janks advised instructions and the steps in the approval process, which would continue, and it was required for board approval for that to take place. There was a comment regarding board members pushing curricula or topics or a particular agenda. And as advised repeatedly by our board attorney, Stephen Fogarty, all of the field representatives employed by or that volunteer with the New Jersey School Board Association at all times reminds or informs board members that they cannot be content discriminatory in any way. We have a responsibility to be neutral, content neutral in execution of our role, which is in the governance capacity primarily, engaging in the policy, writing, and review, and approval process, setting the standard by which all the district operations ensue. I think that's it at this time. Are there any board members that have any commentary at this time before we move on to the next item on our agenda?
Well, there was one other.
Thank you.
So when Ms. Horn was reading off the scores, I was looking at my paper that has the scores and you were correct in your recording of our test scores. We had reported these out in October of 2022. I just want to clarify, like for example, at LMS, you are correct, we did not meet the math goal for our school. I do want to point out that we received a 70% overall meets or exceeds expectations. The state average was 36%. So because our scores were always very high over the state average, the state gives us individual growth goals. And in some areas, we did not meet the growth goals because kind of the higher you are, the harder it is to go higher. Remember, this was after COVID and the state did not change any of the growth goals for us. So we received a 70%, but our growth goal was 74.2. Again, the state average was 36. Another example, U M S, the state average was 36%. We received a 68% and our growth goal was 72%. I'm just pointing out those, so just for clarification. We also, in our presentation in October and again in December, pointed out that we have identified that we do not meet the growth goals and we have put things in place, the interventions, I have them here. Universal Design for Learning, we're in year three of our comprehensive professional development plan. The first year focused on supervisors. The second year was the introduction to all staff and this year is highly supported teacher cohort, onsite coaching and training on district professional development days. One of our teachers just got up and spoke about a committee that she is on here at U M S, where they meet frequently in the morning before school to go over how U D L practices would best support the students in the eighth grade and in her department. We implemented STAR 360 for ELL math assessments. It's a platform aligned with the NJSLA, NJSLS, and the scores can be correlated with the NJSLA. So the students have the opportunity, teachers have the opportunity to see, get a pulse on the children throughout the year, how they're going to perform on the state test. So it's administered in the fall, the winter, and the spring to track their growth and the mastery of grade level and also helps to identify student needs as the year progresses. So the data can be used to identify students in need of supplemental instruction or academic support. It also increases classroom differentiation of U D L. It also increases classroom differentiation of UDL. And then there's additional interventions we have beyond the school day. We also have our Title I Achieve Program, where students, based on their test scores, are identified and placed in these supplemental additional programs before or after school to bolster their skills so that they are proficient in the NJSLA.
Thank you, Superintendent McLaughlin. Hearing no board member comments or questions. Action Agenda is our next item, so I move that we approve our Action Agenda items, 1.0 to 4.2. Show me. Second. Roll call, please, Board Secretary Allen.
Mr. Carlson?
I'd like to separate a 2.7. On that one, I'll vote no, and everything else, yes.
Ms. Dowling?
Yes.
Ms. Dulek?
I would like to vote secondly, item 1.1. So the case number, the HIB case number, 246367, I would like to vote no, and then yes, yes.
Ms. Frankelwerman?
Yes.
Ms. Spina?
Yes.
Mr. Todd?
Yes.
This would like to adjourn again?
Also on section 1.1C, for the case number 246367, no, and then everything, yes.
Dr. Spencewell?
Yes.
Motion, Carrie?
Outstanding. So we've reached a conclusion of our Tuesday, May 23rd, 2023 Open Public Meeting. We appreciate all of those that have participated. And again, I would like to applaud the students and their parents and other family members that advocated at our last month's board meeting, showcasing their outstanding ability to be represented and included and to feel valued in this school district. And that demonstration of early activism was quite inspiring to me. So should there be no objections, I move that we adjourn tonight's Open Public Meeting session.
Show me.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? Thank you, everyone, for coming out. God bless you and good night.